Hear me?
Yes, sir. The recording has started. I'd like to just remind everyone before we get there are a lot of people on the call. If you are not speaking, I'm going to ask that you please mute yourself to give everybody else a chance to actually listen to what's going on. So I'm going to let Mr. James take over the call and please be mindful to mute yourself when you're not speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Today is July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is six P. M. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment Carter at New Jersey. At this time, would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. Lauren, Lauren, can we have a roll call, please?
James?
Here.
Black?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Here.
Benko? O'Connor?
Here.
Chen? Patika?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Dupont?
Here.
Jardine?
Here.
Are in present.
Thank you, Lauren. Counselor, open public meeting notice?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting in the zoning board of adjustment. And those requirements of the open public meetings act have been set in a fine manner. At the annual reorganization meeting in the zoning board, a resolution was adopted setting for the time, date, and location of each scheduled meeting to be held during the current year. Copies the annual meetings notice were provided to two official newspapers of the borough and two additional copies were forwarded to clerk for filing and for posting in a public place. A copy of that annual meeting notice and any revisions there, too, shall be mailed to any person who requests it and who pays the fee established by the governing body to cover the expense of that mailing.
Thank you, counselor. This evening, we have two hearings. Our first order of business is V B twenty-four zero-two. Singsaba Inc., nine forty-one, Port Reading Avenue, block seven-two-zero-six, lot one, for site plan approval. Counselor?
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Lauren. I just want to make note that Brian Chen has joined the meeting.
So how many do we have, Lauren?
Thank you.
We have seven members present.
Seven.
Good evening, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here representing the Sing Saba Inc. This is an application, as you indicated, for block one zero-seven-nine-point-two-five, lots one, nine-point-oh-two, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, and twenty-three in Woodbridge. And in terms of Carteret, it's only block seven-two-zero-six, lot one in Carteret. This is an application proposing to demolish an existing Sikh temple property and consolidate surrounding lots to create a new three-story Sikh temple with associated site improvements, parking, landscaping, and lighting. We are seeking, I believe, three variances here tonight. One is a use variance for a religious use of a Sikh temple in the R twenty-five zone. We also are seeking a side yard setback variance along Arthur Avenue, as well as a height variance for thirty-eight feet, where thirty-five is allowed in the area. I believe in the notice it indicated thirty-nine, but it's in fact thirty-eight feet. I would like an opportunity to share my screen.
Hi, everyone. This is the moderator. I'm going to repeat one more time. If you are not.
Sorry. So, Mr. Arch, before you start, this is John Dupont. I just had to recuse myself from this application so the board knows. And Matt Swinburne from CME did the review of the application, and he'll be handling the borough into this project.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont, yes. So if I could just share.
Mr. Arch, this is the chair, Mr. Arch. Mr. Arch, this is the chairman, and I also want to let you know that I will proceed over this this evening, but I will have to recuse myself from a vote because I live within the radius. And I want to let you know that you are, without me, you only have six votes. So it's your your choice if you want to proceed.
Understood. If I can, when I, I would like to proceed with the testimony certainly tonight. And then if I could just have an opportunity to discuss with my client to just ask if he would like to proceed to a vote tonight based on the testimony and potentially some of the questions or feedback from the application. But I do appreciate you bringing that to my attention, and I'll make sure that I bring that up with my client before we proceed to any vote.
Thank you. Chairman is fine with that. You can proceed.
Okay, if I'm gonna try to share my screen briefly, because I just want to highlight sort of what's a little bit unique about this application. And you see? Can you see a plan up right now?
No. No.
Second, I think I have to share the program then. Apologies. Okay. Do you see?
I'm just gonna say, there's a Ms. Veronica Bernard. Can you please mute yourself?
I'm not seeing anything.
Moderator, can you mute her?
She has been muted. Right now, your screen is just showing a white screen, sir.
That's all it's showing? It's not showing a PDF?
No, just a white screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Okay, well, in any case, I'll just describe what it was that I was going to show. If you look at the site plan which was submitted as part of the as part of our application package, you'll notice that the, this is a property that spans both Carteret and Woodbridge. It's almost entirely in Woodbridge. There's only a small section, and it's really sort of a triangular section of the property that is in Carteret. So the majority of the jurisdiction of this project really falls into Woodbridge. Obviously, we're here in front of you, and I just want to acknowledge that we will be also filing an application and appearing in front of the Woodbridge zoning board. And obviously, if there is any sort of approval tonight, it would certainly be conditioned on on us having to receive approval from Woodbridge as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear on the record. We do have one staff report tonight, and that is a report from CME that's dated July fifteenth. I have two witnesses prepared to testify tonight. The first is Mr. Baldav Butter, who is here as a representative of the Sing Saba Inc. And he'll talk a little bit about what the, what the temple is, what the congregation is, what they do, and some of the operational testimony. And then I have our engineer and planner, Paul Fletcher, who will testify as to the engineering, some of the relief that we require, and then he'll provide the justifications as to why we believe we meet those relief criteria. So unless there's any preliminary questions of me from the board, I'd like to call my first witness. Hearing none, I will, I will ask Mr. Baldav Butter to come forth and be sworn in.
Yes, Mr. Butter, will you raise?
I'm sorry, I heard counselor.
Yeah, Mr. Arch, I, you know, I don't want to get into the way that you're presenting this or do your job or ask you to do your job differently, but I think you should explain that this is already in operation in a building that is not suitable for their needs and that the new building will be replacing the old building. I know this will go in into the construction and the testimony, but I think when you're starting, you should let them know that this is not really something new.
Understood. Thank you so much for that. That was going to be part of the testimony of Mr. Butter as to why the the new temple is necessary. But yes, just for the record, there is an existing temple or existing Sikh temple property that's there that is that is undersized for their needs and that this is really part of replacing that with something that is going to be, number one, beautify the site, really look much better as of right now. It's really unfortunately kind of run down and just not meeting their needs. And I think you'll hear through the testimony of Mr. Butter that this is something that is going to serve the Sikh community and the community at large much better than what is there already. So if Mr. Butter wishes to be sworn in.
Mr. Butter, will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Baldav, do you mind if I call you Baldav?
Please.
Okay, so Baldav, you're familiar with the Sing Saba, with the temple that's there currently and with their operations there currently, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about what it is that Sing Saba does? What our proposal is with the with the new building and why it is that that, you know, the Sikh community needs this new building?
I'll briefly talk about what is Sing Saba. Sing Saba is a history non-profit religious organization. We currently have about two hundred and ten members. The main function of the Sing Saba is to run, maintain the temple building as per Sikh traditions.
I'm sorry, this is the court reporter. It's difficult to hear the witness. Can you please speak closer to the microphone?
Okay. The main function of the Sing Saba is to run and maintain the temple building as per Sikh traditions for the sole purpose of prayers and soul searching. Little bit about our temple. Our temple is commonly known as Gurdwarah, where people from Sikh faith come for prayers. The attendees walk in, take their shoes off, wash their hands, cover their hat, and go to the main prayer hall. After listening to the Kithen Word of God, all attendees join for a prayer. After the prayer, after the prayer, the attendees go to a different hall known as Langer Hall, where the food is served to all. The food is prepared inside the temple and served to all for free as a part of our Sikh tradition. A Sikh temple building has three main parts. The first part is the foyer, the shoe racks, the restrooms that are found near the entrance. The second part is kitchen, where food is prepared, and the longer hall where the food is served. The third main part is a prayer hall. The temple, timing, temple is open to all, all day till nine P. M., where anyone can come in, offer their prayers, and have food. But most of the members, the Monday through Saturday, it's six P. M. to eight P. M. Sunday is ten A. M. to two P. M. Attendees in the evening, Monday through Thursday, are approximately twenty to thirty. Friday, Saturday, hundred to hundred twenty. On Sunday during the day, hundred fifty to two hundred twenty. We have two big days, one from April thirteenth, and the other is a New Year Eve. The temple arranges a shuttle van for local residents to minimize the parking impact for the local residents. Current temple, we currently have an operational temple on site that was approved in an existing old Acme building back in two thousand two. The existing building is approximately ten thousand square feet. With thirty-one approved parking spaces.
I'm sorry, I can't with somebody else's speaking. Please mute your microphones if you're not speaking.
Thank you.
You can continue, Baldav.
Thank you. The reasons for the new building. We want to achieve a prayer hall independent and free from the noise of food preparation and food serving areas. Currently, we don't have that. We want to have a private prayer rooms where a family can perform private final prayers for a departing soul. Currently, we lack that. To provide a space to educate our kids, our language and values of our faith, we don't have any independent space for that. Moreover, the the size of the existing building is inadequate with impaired flow inside and does not serve the current needs of our community. So that's the reason we need a new building. We expect that our membership will grow, grow around three hundred members in the next few years. Our local member will continue to walk to the temple, and on big days, temple will continue to arrange for a van shuttle for residents to minimize the parking impact to the residents who live nearby.
Thank you. Thank you, Baldav. So if I could just, I guess, sum up some of the things that you had mentioned there. You indicated that the reasons for that you needed this this new temple is because the the one that's there currently is woefully inadequate in terms of size and in terms of parking. So this will be, this will be fulfilling a need that that the Sikh community has in the in the municipality. I think you mentioned that the hours of operation are generally Monday through Saturday, six, or sorry.
Six P. M. five P. M.
Six P. M. to eight P. M. Sunday, ten A. M. to two P. M. Those are the, I guess, the prayer times. But your temple is open all day until nine P. M. to to welcome anybody that wishes to come in. And that when you have, you have, that your faith has two large, I guess, celebration days, and during those days, you arrange to have actually a shuttle service in order to make sure that there isn't any overflow parking requirements. Is that correct? I do want to direct your attention to the CME report. There was a couple of questions there. One involved trash and refuse. We're not showing any trash enclosure currently on the plan. But you would agree that that we will show, that we will add a trash enclosure, and that it will conform to all the screening requirements that the township has. Is that correct, or the borough has?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, one of the questions. If you could please mute, sir. Thank you. One of the other questions was concerning loading. And my understanding is that the only deliveries that you get are one van delivery on Tuesdays. And so you don't believe that a dedicated loading space would be necessary. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay, and I think and based on your your testimony, the the number of parking spaces that we are providing, we're not asking for a variance for parking, but the amount of parking spaces that we're providing, you believe, is more than adequate to accommodate your your existing congregates and your and any planned expansion, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I have no further direct, direct questions of Mr. Butter. If the board has any questions, I would defer to them.
This is the operator. I just want to let you know that I've locked anybody from unmuting themselves. So I will let the chairman let me know when he's ready for me to unlock everyone or who needs to speak. Because it, there are people just unmuting themselves, and it's affecting the call.
Certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope you can hear me. We've heard the expert testimony of Mr. Butter, and I'd like to open up to the board right now to see if the board has any questions of this witness. Hearing none. I'd like to open up to the public now to see if there's any questions of the expert witness.
This is the operator. I am now unlocking. So anyone that would like to ask a question, please unmute yourself. If you are on the phone, press door six. Once again, if you would like to unmute yourself before I lock the muting option again, please unmute yourself and ask your question. Chairman, it does not look like you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Counselor, you want to proceed?
Absolutely. I have one final witness, and that would be Mr. Paul Fletcher, who is our engineer and also our expert. I would ask that he be allowed to unmute so that he can be sworn in and and that he can put his credentials on for both of those.
Mr. Fletcher, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Fletcher. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, you are both a licensed engineer and and you are also a professional planner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and if you could please just briefly give us a a quick overview of your credentials in both engineering and planning so that we can ask that you be accepted in both of those fields.
Certainly. As as you mentioned, I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I am the principal of Fletcher Engineering and have been so for a little over thirty years now. I've been accepted in numerous boards throughout Middlesex, Monmouth, Morris Counties, in front of the Carteret Board, Board of Adjustment and Planning Board on numerous occasions, have been accepted as an expert in those two fields.
I would ask that the board please accept Mr. Fletcher as a as a expert in both engineering and in planning, or if you have any other questions or want here of him.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Please proceed.
Mr. Fletcher, if you can, just, please just orient us to the site and and then I guess just do the engineering testimony first and then indicate when you're done with that, and we can move on to the planning testimony.
Certainly. The subject property. It as you had mentioned, it's partly in the in Carteret, but the majority of the property is in Woodbridge Township in the Port Reading section. It has frontage on four roads to the south Port Reading Avenue, to the north Large Street, to the west southeast Grant Street, Grant Avenue, and to the east Arthur Avenue. The subject property is sixty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet. That's one point five acres. And currently, it's improved with a a Sikh temple and a number of residential properties that will be demolished if they haven't already. The applicant proposes to construct a three-story Sikh temple. It will be located in the east quadrant of the site, budding Arthur Avenue. It will be fifty-seven feet wide, one hundred and sixty-two feet long. The balance of the site will be utilized for parking and also stormwater management. The parking requirements for meeting hall and classrooms has been determined to be a hundred and five spaces. We're providing a total of one hundred and forty-six spaces. Access to the parking is from Port Reading Avenue and southeast Grant Avenue. The stormwater management has been mitigated with two underground detention systems and also a surface infiltration basin. Stormwater runoff will be captured throughout the site and routed through those detention facilities in order to reduce the the volumes of the sub runoff to pre-existing conditions. Have reviewed the CME report regarding some engineering issues. The applicant is fully agreeable to revising the plan to address all the individual items that CME has raised.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. And if you could just touch upon, it looks like I believe we're seeking relief, not only for that, for the use variance, for the the religious use, but also that setback along Arthur and and the height variance as well. So if you can switch from engineering to planning, and please address those those requests for relief and whether you believe that we can meet the justifications for that under the M L U L.
Certainly. Yes, there is a front yard setback violation to Arthur Avenue. We're proposing four feet to the building. I believe twenty feet is required. That's a function of maximizing the parking, gives us an extra role, allows us to adequately provide the amount of parking that's needed for this facility. The applicant's also seeking a a use variance to construct the Sikh temple with associated improvements on the property that's partially located in the R twenty-five zone. A religious use is considered an inherently beneficial use, meaning that the positive criteria of the municipal land use law is satisfied. We do have to focus on the negative criteria as well and determine if the requested relief can be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good and won't substantially impair the intent and purpose of the borough's master plan. This is a unique situation, and the the majority of the proposed project falls within another municipality's jurisdiction. Therefore, certain requirements such as rear setback, side setback, lot coverage are skewed due to the shape of the lot. We are requesting a a side yard setback of Arthur, and that's necessitated by the need to maximize parking throughout the site to ensure that there is adequate parking to accommodate all congregants and to avoid overflow onto the surrounding streets. The relative relief of the side yard setback is substantially outweighed by the benefits of being able to provide maximum parking on site and off of the residential streets. We are additionally seeking a height variance to allow for a thirty-eight-foot elevation where thirty-five feet is allowed in the zone. This is consistent with the heights of the residential development right across the street on Arthur Avenue. Finally, this proposal meets the following purposes of the municipal land use law and the borough's master plan. Purpose A, to encourage development in a manner to promote the public health, morals, safety, and general welfare. This is a proposed religious use, is inherently beneficial and promotes the general welfare. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in a variety of uses to meet the needs of New Jersey residents. This project answers a need for the Sikh community, provides a place of worship and teaching. Purpose H, to encourage the free flow of traffic. By granting the requested relief, it allows for the most efficient distribution of parking, which reduces the strain of overflow parking. Purpose I, to promote desirable visual environment. This is a site that is in need of a facelift. The proposed improvements will help to beautify the property and the surrounding area. In conclusion, I believe the relief sought can be granted without substantial detriment, and that the benefits for the community in the borough outweigh any potential negatives.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. And just to clarify, you did indicate that in the CME report, we can comply with all of the revision recommendation and comments in that report, correct?
Correct. We we can and will do so.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Fletcher. I give him up to the board.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. This time, I'd like to open up to the board and ask if anyone on the board has any questions of this expert witness.
Chairman, this is Tom Jardine. There was one point raised in CME's memo that they asked for testimony from the engineer with respect to the existing or proposed on-street parking along Larch and Arthur, and whether there was any striping proposed for those spaces?
We're not proposing striping on on the streets. We feel we have enough. We have adequate. We're not proposing striping on the streets, we feel we have enough, we have adequate parking on site.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, thanks. Thank you for your testimony, appreciate you referencing the letter that we prepared and reference this application. You did note several engineering items that need to be addressed with any approvals that the board might grant. And just for the board's information, these comments have been relatively minor technical comments, we have no issues with these being conditions of any approval that the board might grant. One specific item I just want to make note to the applicant is the presence of some existing PSENG overhead wires along Arthur Avenue. Just in past experience with projects in town, there have been some issues with just maintaining the necessary clearance from those overhead wires to the building and noting that you do have a reduced front yard setback. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and obviously that's something that would need to be worked out between the applicant and PSENG.
That's understood.
And just related to utility connections, I did hear in the Mr. Butter's testimony just mention of a kitchen, I just want to make sure that any kitchens would be provided with necessary grease traps in accordance with plumbing subcode.
I see Mr. Butter shaking his head, yes, we would comply with all necessary codes.
All right, I think Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Butter's testimony covered all the items that we had in our letter, no further questions.
Hold on one second, counselor, let me close to my board, if my board has no questions of this expert witness and open up to the public, does the public have any questions of this expert witness? Mr. Moderator, no one from the public, right?
Anyone would like to unmute themselves, you can unmute yourselves, if you're on the phone, press star six. Doesn't look like we have anyone dialed in, it looks like everyone on the WebEx app or on the website. We don't have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, okay, counselor, please proceed.
Thank you, that would be the close of my testimony in summation, we would just like to say that we really think that this is a great benefit to the community overall, it's obviously something that as the chairman rightfully pointed out is needed in the Sikh community, and we think it's going to be a great addition to both Carteret and to Woodbridge. I would just ask if Mr. Butter can unmute, and as I indicated before, we do have only six board members tonight. So I'm going to ask Butter, Mr. Butter to verify if he wants to proceed to a vote tonight. Because of use variance is involved, there would need to be five affirmative votes, which means if any one board member voted no, it could still be approved, but if any two vote no, the application would fail, so you have the option to proceed to a vote tonight, or we can have the option to carry it and request that additional board members hear this testimony or review the transcript and then vote at a later time. So are you comfortable proceeding forward tonight?
Counselor, just to be clear, the chairman made no representation or comment as to whether he liked this project or not, that was Mr. Fletcher's testimony.
Absolutely, I apologize if I misspoke, I'm not indicating that there was any, not indicating anything of the sort, that's my mistake if I misspoke, but I'm simply asking my client if he wishes to proceed forward with a vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, this is the chairman.
This is Mike Banker, I'm sorry, I came in late, I'm not sure if you had me down.
Yes, we were down.
Thank you.
So Baldev, if you can just shake your head yes or no if you want to proceed to a vote tonight. He is shaking his head yes, we would like to proceed to a vote tonight if possible, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jardine, can you tee this up for the board, understanding that I will abstain from the vote?
Yes, Chairman, sure, as the board members just heard, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with respect to nine forty-one Port Reading Avenue. There are several lots in the township of Woodbridge and one lot in the borough of Carteret. As you heard, the applicant is proposing, there's an existing religious temple at this site and the existing temple and four residential structures within Woodbridge Township would be demolished, then the applicant proposes to construct a two-story religious temple with a ground floor footprint of approximately ninety-one hundred square feet. The applicant is seeking two variances, a use variance under a D three conditional use variance and a bulk variance, a C two bulk variance with respect to the zoning that's required in terms of minimum front yard and maximum building height. Heard the testimony that this is an inherently beneficial use, and that is correct, which means that the positive criteria, both tests are met. So you've heard the testimony of a representative of the applicant as well as the planner and engineer, Mr. Fletcher. If the board credits that testimony and believes the applicant has met its burden, it can move and second a motion to approve the application. It would be subject to all the conditions set forth in the July fifteen, twenty twenty-four CME associates memorandum, so I'd ask for a motion one way or the other.
This is Mr. Black, vice chairman, motion to approve.
This is Jerry Howery, I'd like to second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, poll the board, please.
Black?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Banker? Banker?
Yes.
O'Connor?
I'm sorry, yes.
O'Connor? Chen?
Yes.
Yes.
Patika?
Yeah.
Lowman?
Yes.
It's been approved.
Thank you so much, have a lovely night.
And for the record, and just for the record, the chairman abstains from vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arch.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, good luck, gentlemen, have a good night. All right, thank you, everyone, we'll move on to our second order of business this evening, VB two eight zero four Juan Santos, two eighty-five Randolph Street, block five one zero one lot twenty-one. Applicant is seeking a subdivision. Counselor, for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, professional staff, attorney James Clarkin of the firm of Clarkin and Vignolo for the applicant. Board members, this is an application to demolish an existing undersized dwelling on a significantly oversized lot. We then seek to subdivide that lot as the chairman indicated and to construct a two-family dwelling on each of the two proposed lots. There are fourteen variances that are required between these two lots. At first you might think that's a lot of relief to ask for, but when we drill down a little deeper, you're going to find four things. First, some of the variances are de minimis in scope. I will give you an example in a minute. Second, some of the other variances are identical to what this board has approved in the past for other properties in your R fifty zones. Third, some of the variances are duplicated. For example, there are variances for density as well as the number of units you can put in a building. Both of those are included in a use variance for a two-family use. Fourth and finally, in some other respects, the application meets some of the zone standards. For example, the front yard setbacks of each proposed building will be conforming and almost double what the ordinance requires. Next, very important, the applicant is proposing a conforming number of parking spaces for each of the units. Then, and I think this is also critical, the building coverage for each lot is only thirty-four percent, where the ordinance allows as much as sixty percent. The lot is irregular in shape and that needs to be pointed out, it's irregular along the rear line for two reasons, first, there is a large notch in the upper left-hand corner, that would be southwest on your map. In addition, the entire rear yard line is severely angled, creating some challenges. I'd like next to speak for a few moments about the required lot area. As I mentioned, the lot is significantly oversized.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clarkin, is there any way you can turn your camera on, we don't see you, I think we have to see you, right?
I'm having trouble with the camera, John.
Okay, all right.
I think it's more important what I say than what I look like.
Technically, he's not testifying, it would be good to have him on camera, but since he's not under oath, he doesn't necessarily have to be on screen, but it'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Jardine.
You're welcome.
All right. Lot, as I said, significantly oversized, it is twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet. The minimum lot area in your ordinance is six thousand five hundred square feet per lot. So for two lots, that's thirteen thousand square feet. So yes, with twelve thousand nine ninety, we are only ten square feet off. And therefore, we say to you, this is a de minimis variance. We also think the building height is de minimis. Your ordinance limits the building to thirty-five feet and we are one foot above that. On the positive side, although we require a de minimis variance, this allows the first floor to include enclosed garage spaces. Later, our planner will take you through each of the variances, identifying them and then justifying. The basis for granting the use variance is that the property is particularly suitable for these two family uses. We will present complete proofs to justify the use variance. We will also address the bulk variances. The overall basis for granting these bulk variances is the flexible C two analysis, where we look at the benefits to the borough and then see if there are any detriments that might result from granting the variances. One of the benefits will be eliminating the non-conforming dwelling, which is undersized. The second benefit to Carteret will be eliminating the non-conforming shed, which is on top of one of the sidelines. Our planner will also testify and add to the list of those benefits in his testimony. We have one witness this evening who is Angelo Valtudo. He will serve both as our expert in the fields of engineering and planning. He will first lay out the proposed buildings and the site improvements, then he will pivot and address the planning issues. Mr. Chairman, unless you or any of the board members who are the staff have any initial questions, I'm happy to field them, otherwise I can move to the first witness.
Thank you, counselor, yes, please proceed with your first witness, I just want to have his credentials checked.
Counselor? We'll call Mr. Angelo Valtudo.
Sir, will you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Angelo, the chairman.
You're muted.
Are you, are you, can we hear Mr. Valtudo?
No, he's muted.
Yep. Angelo, can you speak? Nope, still not live yet, folks.
I'm sorry, who am I unmuting? I do not see Angelo on.
It might be John Spigans, he's in John, he's in Mr. Spigans' office.
I do see a John, but no last name. So I'll ask John, can you try to unmute yourself, please?
Not yet.
You're not on either, you're still muted. Mr. Spigans, you're still muted.
On the WebEx screen, there'll be a mute button on the lower left-hand.
Looks like a little microphone. I just sent you a request to unmute yourself. On the WebEx screen. Mr. Spigans, can you hear me? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, so I got thumbs up. But now on your screen, on the WebEx screen, can you see Mr. Dupont? Because I see you looking at a keyboard, do you see Mr. Dupont, give me a thumbs up. Okay, so on the screen where you're looking at right now, there should be a little microphone with the flash going right across it, you want to unmute yourself. Would you like me to give you a phone number to dial into? It should be in the meeting.
We need it.
He was unmuted before, but there was a conversation happening in the background, so I had to mute him. But he should be able to unmute himself now.
No. The mute button is not on your.
Do you see the message from me that sends you a request to unmute yourself? I keep sending it, so you might see a pop-up that asks you to unmute yourself. Do you have the WebEx calendar invitation, there's a dial-in information on that. You might be able to dial in with your phone.
You might be unmuted now.
I know, he's still muted, so another option that I have for you, Mr. Spigans, I could kick you out of the meeting and you join back in, and I'll allow you, but you'll come in and unmute it. That's one other option that you have, but I see that there's a number of phone that just dialed in. So to unmute yourself as you're dialed in right now, press star six. On the phone, click star six. It looks like you're unmuted on the phone. So what I need you to do is make sure that your volume is down on your computer, otherwise you're going to have some feedback.
Sir, if I knew how to do that, I'd be using that, I'd be using that, I'd be using that.
It's probably the F two button.
I have to mute your phone, I just need you to turn the volume off on your computer. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner near the clock, there should be a little speaker. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner near the clock, there should be a little speaker. Use the little speaker. At the bottom near the clock, bottom right-hand corner of your screen. Alright, so I'm going to ask you to press star stick on the phone again. I want to see if you muted yourself. I'm not sure if you heard me. Press star stick, please.
So we're unmuted now?
Yeah, so your volume is still up on your lap, on the computer right now. Are there speakers on your desk? There might be a button on the speaker to turn it off.
There's no speaker on my desk.
Alright, well, I'm not sure. Is there somebody else in there that knows how to use a computer?
Give me a couple minutes.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator. Have a, can't come off and have a. I would kick him off and have him dial back in, or.
Or did you say on the phone? You're going to lose the on video. I'm going to kick him off the WebEx, but they'll be on the phone.
Alright, we need to have him live. If he tells us what kind of computer he has, we can tell him where the volume down button is.
Alright, press star stick again on the phone, because I had to mute you because of the feedback. Can you press star stick on the phone?
It says I'm unmuted.
Is this a Mac or a PC?
PC.
I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn. I'm going to turn the phone off, okay? So on your keyboard, is there a volume button, like up or down button on the keyboard? It looks like a little speaker.
He said he thinks he's unmuted now.
It looks like they disconnected from the call.
Oh, great.
So they're no longer on the phone call right now.
Mr. Spigans, do you have at the top of your keyboard F-one, F-two, F-three, F-four?
Can you do me a favor and click Control M on your keyboard? Control and M. Control and M on your keyboard. Alright, I'm going to bump you off and try to join. I mean, I'm not sure if they're going to be able to join back in if they can't turn the volume off. I'll try to call your office and have a conversation with them. Give me one second, please.
Hello?
Sounds like we have someone that just dialed in.
Yep, that's Angelo on my own personal cell, so I don't know if you can get me into with video, and then I can get into presenting what hopefully will be worth a long wait.
Well, the issue is that, once you are next, the issue is that once you're next to the computer with your phone, the computer will sound coming out of it.
I understand that. I'm now in the other room. Would I be getting video on my cellphone? John is trying to still hook up his computer, but I'm trying to get this through as quickly as possible. I noted that Mr. Fletcher and I think the other engineer were calling in. So hopefully, if I can get a video.
Well, for you to get video, you would have to have WebEx installed on your phone. You just dial in.
Gotcha. Alright, we'll have to rely on Mr..
Yeah, so how about you keep me on the phone? You stay on the phone, and take a walk over there, because it's not very difficult to turn the volume up or down on a computer.
Okay.
I just going to ask you some questions and see if you see some things, and I'll walk you through muting the machine. Right? So if you go on his keyboard, don't put me on speaker, keep me on the phone, because we're going to get feedback again.
Top, we're talking here.
Okay, just don't put me on speaker. Now, if you look on his keyboard, is it a laptop or is it a desktop?
Laptop. No, it's a laptop.
It's a laptop. So if you look across the top, there's going to be number one, two, three, four, five, six, right? Do you see those numbers there?
No, go say it again, sir.
Yeah, it's right across the top of the keyboard.
Yes, sir. We don't hear the feedback now, so.
Yeah, well, am I on speaker right now?
Yes, on my phone, yes.
Okay, so we're not hearing feedback, so he can speak. You can go ahead.
So he can speak, then you can use the video. Okay.
No, no, he can be in front of the camera.
Okay, let me just get.
It sounds like he has another phone that's on at the same time on the desk. Mr. Spigans, you there?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Hello?
Okay, yeah, this is Angelo. I'm on my phone, and I'm now sitting to where I can be seen. And hopefully, his lengthy wait will be worth what I have to say.
Right, there you go. You're good.
Alright.
Alright, we were at the point where we were going to ask Mr. Valtudo for his credentials.
National Science Civil Engineering, North College of Engineering, nineteen seventy-two. Licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. For decades, I have appeared before this board for decades. Both licenses are in good stead, and with the exception of being an old-timer who can't negotiate a computer, everything is in good, good order.
Have your credentials changed in any way so you were last accepted by this board?
Not other than being more experienced.
Wonderful. Mr. Chairman, I'd offer him up as an expert in both fields.
Wonder, wonderful. Please proceed.
Mr. Valtudo, did your office prepare the engineering drawings that were submitted with this application?
Yes, sir, we did.
Have you visited this site? Have you also toured the neighborhood? And do you feel?
Yes, I have. I am, yes, sir.
Alright.
Yes.
Please describe the neighborhood for the board, even though they are all residents.
Well, the neighborhood is pretty much residential in character, and I called as the neighborhood. I identified as Randolph Street from Roosevelt Avenue down to Duffy Street and up to its intersection with Mary Street. And I prepared an exhibit A-one, which was sent on to Lauren. I don't know if that's something you want to put into the screen for now, or do I just comment about it?
Lauren, do you have that exhibit?
Was it the one that was sent over this afternoon?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's been uploaded onto the website.
Thank you. We would request it be admitted as A-one.
So be it.
Mr. Valtudo, all of the lots in this neighborhood are in the R-fifty zone, correct?
R-twenty-five?
R-fifty.
I'm sorry, R-fifty. Yes, R-fifty, correct. Yes.
And you've identified thirty-one residential lots and one vacant, correct?
I did.
Alright, can you give the board the breakdown based on lot size?
Sure. Well, the lot size, I broke it down to fifty by a hundred, in which there were fourteen lots, or representing forty-five and change percent of the thirty-one that are developed. Lots that were from twenty-five to forty-one point four-five, seven lots that represent twenty-two and a half percent of the thirty-one. And those are all undersized for the sixty-five foot width by a hundred. And then the final one are seventy-five by a hundred, and there were seventy lots, seven lots, or twenty-two and a half percent. In addition, there were three wrecked triangular lots that I just called non-conforming lots, and that represented nine point six-eight percent. So that.
Go ahead, please continue.
So that only twenty-two point five eight percent or seven lots meet the standards of the R-fifty zone. Everything else is non-conforming.
Can you break down the number of single-family and multifamily, please?
Yes, sir. With regard to the single families, there are, let me just check and see individually. There were ten, sixteen, and four. There were twenty and three. There were twenty-three of the thirty-one single families.
And how many two families?
Two families, three and two is five.
And any three families?
Yes, sir. There were two, three families.
Alright, so in summary, you have seven conforming lots, which are about twenty-three percent of the total, and twenty-four non-conforming, about seventy-seven percent of the total, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and of the seven lots that do not conform, three of them are actually two-family uses.
They are.
Okay. Did you do a parking analysis as well?
Yes, sir, we did. And the one thing that I think speaks well with regard to the neighborhood is that of the thirty-one lots, only nine have non-conforming for parking. The remaining twenty-two are seventy-one percent or twenty-two are conforming, and nine or twenty-nine percent are non-conforming. And our testimony will be that with what we're proposing, we are going to meet the requirement for each of the units.
Okay. Next, please describe the dimensions of the lot.
Sure. The lot is, has a hundred-foot of frontage on the southerly side of Randolph. It has a hundred and nineteen feet of depth on the westerly side. The easterly side has a hundred feet, and there's that jog or notch, I believe we're, we've referred to it on the other side, for a total area of twelve thousand nine hundred ninety square feet.
Next, please tell the board what's on the property today.
Property is a undersized, non-conforming, one-story dwelling, having approximately one thousand seven hundred eighty-one square feet, which is less than the zone requirement for the R-fifty zone. And there's also a shed, as you indicated, that's situated near the rear of the property, right, pretty much on the property line.
Now, utilizing your engineering drawings, please give the board the details of what the applicant is proposing.
Yes, sir. We are seeking to subdivide the lot into two fifty-five, fifty-foot wide lots, and to construct the two-family dwelling on each lot. Each unit within the two-family will be three bedrooms and two bathrooms. There will be three onsite parking spaces, as I said, for each unit, one in the garage, and two in the driveway access, accessing the garage. And that the buildings will meet all the front and side yard stepbacks required in the zone. With regard to the building coverage, as I believe you spoke in your opening comments, we are at thirty-three point sixty-six percent for proposed lot twenty-one point oh one, and thirty-four point six four percent for proposed lot twenty-one point oh two. And I believe you indicated that the standard is at sixty, so we're almost half of what is permitted in the zone, despite having a proposal for two units on each lot. We are. We are going to, as shown on the plan, reconstruct the sidewalk and the curbing. Curbing, which is slate curbing, which is what is in the area, and we're going to construct it new to borough standards. With regard to discussions that we had with Mr. Dupont. All of the utilities that would be required to service the use that we're proposing is in existence. We are proposing two street trees, and we will propose, should we be able to work out with Mr. Dupont's office, some facade landscaping along the front of the building. The lighting will be just residential lighting for each of the buildings, and that the stormwater management will be handled, and that was one of the comments in Mr. Dupont's report. We're going to handle it through underground seepage pits, probably in the rear yard where we believe we have enough area. But we have no objection, and I hope Mr. Dupont will agree to allow us, as a condition of approval, to satisfy him that we can construct what would be appropriate in the rear yard. There is also one other item that I had a brief discussion with Mr. Dupont. There is a storm drain inlet just off our property line that I believe Mr. Dupont said that the borough installed. If that's the case, and if there is access to us by virtue of an easement, then we could directly connect our reduced flow from the seepage pit right into that, and pretty much eliminate right now all of the overland flow that goes off into that direction, but goes so in uncontrolled manner.
Alright. If I can step back for one second, Mr. Valtudo. That inlet back there is not a burrow inlet. That's, that was built when that corner lot was built. That's a private inlet for the white home right next door to you.
Alright, I apologize. I misunderstood. That's why I wanted to.
Okay.
So that we still obviously would do what we have to do with the installation, I believe, with the biggest open area in the back, and present it to Mr. Dupont, and provide it so that it will not go where it now flows naturally to the back corner of our property, and handle all the runoff that is being developed by the development that we propose.
Alright, well, that'll let us segue into Mr. Dupont's report, date of July fifteen, two thousand twenty-four. You've seen that report, Mr. Valtudo?
I've seen it and read it, and am prepared to testify afterward.
Alright, let's take each item. All right, let's take each item in numbered order, please.
Sure, with regards to number one, we will show the um will add to the plan the limits of disturbance. That will obviously be modified by virtue of what we come up with as the seepage design. And I would like to place on the record at this point, we've already filed an application with Freehold Soil in which we indicated the entire property is going to be the limited disturbance, which is based on their definition of disturbance. We will certainly provide the calculations. I know number three, jumping ahead to drainage calculations, which is part and parcel to what we're going to do with the seepage handling. And in that, we will be providing number two, which is the change or increase in the impervious and drivable surfaces.
Moving on to number four.
Yep, we will address, obviously, we understand and aware that there are currently issues with regard to runoff in this neighborhood. And it is our intention. And what we put on the record is that we will propose upon a plan, a seepage plan that Mr. DuPont will look at, review, and hopefully confirm of what we're proposing, will not do any additional runoff from the site, but in fact, will reduce it by virtue of the improvements we're proposing. Number number five, we are confirming each year, and it has its individual laterals. And permits will be required. And we do so because unfortunately, back in the day, the two-family units typically just had one lateral. And you you have a problem with one of the units, and it just backs up everybody, no pun intended. By doing it individually, it can be handled and maintained a lot better.
Number six, please.
Number, okay, that the front right along the edge of the property line, we're in the 100-year floodplain. And while we are proposing what is above the 100-year floodplain, one of the things that I believe we should put on the record right now is the architectural plan calls a crawl space. So even though the area of habitableness for the unit was well above the floodplain, the crawl space will not be. So that we offer that the only way we can get through and have an approval with the DEP's blessing is by putting it on a slab without a crawl space.
Okay.
We will comply with the flare, with the ten for driveway, and then flare and a foot on either side for access.
And just hit number nine, I'll take eight.
Okay, number nine. Obviously, we have the sanitary, Middlesex County pre-old soil we have already filed for, and with regard to DEP. And with regard to DEP, it is going to be not a major but a minor application because we're not increasing the pervious coverage by over a half acre. And all of that information will be in a report that we file with Mr. DuPont.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address item number eight. We don't have the architect available this evening. I can point out to you that both the elevations and the floor plans were submitted at the beginning of this process with the application. I can also further indicate to you that there's going to be a revision to the floor plan for the ground floor. You have the garages at the front. You have a proposed family room behind there. And you also have an additional half bath, a toilet, and a sink on just one in each of the two structures. Not per unit, but per building. So the bottom floor will only be accessible to the occupant of the first floor. They will be the only ones to have use of the family room at the ground level and that bathroom. Mr. Chairman, that concludes.
So what you're saying is that so what you're saying is that these proposed two families are not side by side, they are up and down. And only the first floor occupant will have use of that room.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Well noted.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Mr. Valtudo, moving from engineering to planning, let's start with the use variance.
Mr. Clark, do you want to go through the engineering comments first before we start planning, or you want to do it at the end?
Sure, whatever you want.
I just got a couple of questions. So, one, Mr. Valtudo, if you're going to try to use seepage pits in the rear of the property, you know you're going to have to do soil testing before it's approved, okay? So soil testing is going to be required, and you got to make sure you get some perp rate back there, okay?
He would agree to that as a voluntary condition of the hopeful approval.
Very good. All right.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, and you know, there's other means that seepage doesn't work. And it's a good possibility it doesn't to to use the large-scale pipes and to to retain and then run it off in a controlled manner to the street.
Yeah, that's that absolutely. As far as the floodplain, so I know a portion of the property is in a floodplain. You said you're gonna we're gonna, I guess, not have a basement, but the basement's like your first floor is up in the air, right? Your first floor is 10 feet above grade. So the garage level, that's your ground floor? Are you, tell me, are you lowering this house? Are you keeping it, I don't, explain to me, or did you propose to have a basement below the garages? Or do you know? I don't know.
Well, I'm
Go ahead, Angela.
Well, I was just going to say, the um the design is going to be that the garages are going to be at the grade, which is going to be above. And then we're going to raise the house, certainly not the 10 feet that was shown on the architecturals. But to do it at a raised, we're certainly not going to have it where it's that that high.
Okay, so two, two things, right? You have a floodplain, you have to get your first floor at the proper elevation, so it's going to be higher than you anticipate. And two, the garage is on the, currently on the architectural plan, there's two garages. And we said that there's the first floor unit is going to have access to the garage floor, right? The room and everything, where rooms on that ground floor. How does the, how does the occupant of the second floor two-family access their garage? Do they have a stairwell from their garage up, or we haven't decided yet, or?
Side door.
What was that, side door?
Yeah, side door.
Okay, how does the, how's, how does the occupant of the second unit get in their home without the garage? Is this, is it, are they both walking their front door? One's up, one's down? Or are they walking around the back of that property?
They, they, they will have to walk around to the front of the property to access.
So the front door that we see facing Randolph, that main door?
Yes.
Open that door, you'll have one unit right to the right, and the other one goes upstairs.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then, I'm sorry, there's one more thing up. Driveways, no problem.
I know, I, I, whoa, 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 John, back up. I don't think that's right.
Okay, let's talk about it.
The the garage, the garage level is ground level. And I'd say six to eight inches from there will be the family room behind the garage. The second the second tenant will be on the second floor. The first floor is the first tenant.
That's right, so the first, so the tenant
So the person, the person on the second floor, the person on the second floor is going to have to go two staircases to get to their unit.
That's right. And two staircases outside to get to their garage.
Maybe we should clarify. What is the garage going to be? The ground floor going to be above the floodplain or below it?
Any habitable area would have to be a minimum one foot above the floodplain. The problem is, the architectural plan that I guess was submitted just calls first and second floor and does not have, as Mr. Clarkan indicated, what really should probably be identified as a ground floor because that's at the level that the garage floors are at.
Yeah, we don't have a plan that shows that on the ground floor. We, the architects were submitted, show first and second floor.
If I'm hearing the testimony correct, the first unit occupies the first floor and part of the ground floor as a family room. And the second unit is on the second floor.
Correct.
But the ground how do you deal with the ground floor not being usable? I think you could put a garage there, right? You can't put usable space on the ground floor.
Unless it's, unless it's built above that floodplain.
Correct. Correct.
And again, now to meet up with the odd part is that I'm sorry, but just to say, the second floor garage access is the odd part still to me.
I mean, I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying, unless there's a secondary staircase internally that takes you from the family room to the first floor. The other staircase is going to be common.
Now, the the staircase from the first floor to the family room will only be accessible by the first floor occupant. The second floor occupant will have no rights to any space on the ground floor other than their garage area.
So you're telling me there's two staircases from the ground floor that go to the first floor, and then one staircase that goes to the second floor?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That makes sense. So there's no, no common staircase, there's two individual staircases that transverse on the first floor and only one that goes to the second floor.
Correct.
Okay, and where does the, where does the, where's the staircase accessing the second floor start?
At the front of the house.
That main door, that main, that door facing Randolph will be a door you open, and it will be access both the first floor and second floor apartments.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. DuPont.
And
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I just, you know, given, I don't know if there was any changes, but the maximum building height is 36 feet. Are you still at the 37.15 for lot 01 and 37.24 for lot 02, or is that going to change?
That that should not change.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's what we're applying for.
Okay.
Right.
All right, if we can if we've finished on that issue, if everybody's satisfied with it, let me ask Mr. Valtudo to move on to justify the use variance. The R50 zone only permits one family, correct? And we're proposing two family.
Yes, sir, it is.
Is the property, in your professional planning opinion, particularly suitable for these two-family uses?
In my opinion, it is particularly suited, suitable, because the lot is significantly oversized, being just 10 square feet shy of a double the ordinance requirement. This allows the structure, which may be both the front and side setbacks and one of the rear setbacks. The only reason we require variance for the second rear yard setback is because of the notch or the the return, if you will, in the backyard. As shown on the plan, this, in my opinion, is clearly a hardship situation. Particular suitability is further proved by being able to construct the buildings that are just barely over one-half of the maximum permitted building coverage and would show that it would be properly and able to fit on the lots without causing any hardships or detriment.
All right. As part of the use variance proofs, we also have to prove the negative criteria.
Yes, sir, that is correct. We have to prove that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment to the borough zone plan.
All right, what impact do you see upon the neighborhood by granting the use variance?
I professionally personally do not see any detriment to the public good. This is not an overbuild. The project will not impact light, air, open space. That is borne out because of the front and side setbacks conform, and most of the rear yard does. And would only totally conform if it was not for the regular shape of the rear yard. A conforming number of parking spaces are proposed, so there'll be no negative impact on the neighborhood on that issue. And with the testimony this evening, the stormwater manage, management that will be proposed and reviewed by Mr. DuPont would also negate any types or forms of adverse impact.
What about any impact on real estate property values?
Well, I'm clearly not a realer, nor have I been qualified as one. But I have been working planning work in the borough and the surrounding communities for decades. In my experience, a knockdown, as we're proposing, and a rebuild that would have a positive impact on real estate prices, not only for the area adjoining our property, but the neighborhood, as I identified it in what we called A1. It's a good opportunity for the borough not only approve a private redevelopment, but also give a shot in the arm, in my opinion, to the neighborhood of Randolph. This is a older neighborhood with a mix of older houses, homes that could be, or many of them, just looking at the construction of their foundations, 60 to 80 years in age, with only a few newer homes in the mix that were part of approvals by this board with subdivisions and two-family uses.
All right, do you see any substantial impairment to the borough's zone plan by granting these use variances?
No, sir, absolutely not. As my inspection of the neighborhood shows, there are already six two-family uses and three, excuse me, and two three-family uses. The borough has never shied away from the density issue of a variance that we're seeking. This is, as we've spoken about, a unique lot. There are many, no other lots in this neighborhood with the lot width, lot area, and depth that what we have. And as such, would not create a domino effect should the board grant the application before it this evening.
All right, let's discuss the reconciliation. And you reconcile the granting of this use variance with the fact that the R50 zone does not permit a two-family use?
Yes, sir, I believe I can. The borough has had always had a forward-reaching policy allowing greater density than the ordinance requires as a tool to modernize the outdated housing stock. The New Jersey Supreme Court Medici case gives example of how we can accomplish this reconciliation. One manner is that we can point to change in the characteristics of the community. And we can point to the pattern of approving greater density, which has now taken ongoing for more than 25 years. And that again is based on the lots that I observed in which this board has granted applications similar to what we're proposing this evening. And they've all worked well within the neighborhood.
All right, let's talk about the density variances.
Yes, sir. In my opinion, is that the density variance is what we call subsume within the use variance. Meaning that if the board is to approve a two-family use, then they are automatically approving it as more density than the ordinance allows. The two variances go hand in hand, and the density variance does not require any separate proofs, in my opinion.
All right, now related to that is another variance for maximum dwelling units per unit. How do you address that?
Yes, sir, same situation. Obviously, if you are approving a two-family use, then you are approving a variance. Yes, sir, same situation. Obviously, if you are approving a two family use, then you are approving a variance. For two dwelling units in the building instead of one, that is what is part of the R fifty zone.
All right, let's take a look at the building height variance.
This is another, in my opinion, a de minimis variance. The ordinance allows thirty six feet and three stories, and we are proposing thirty seven feet and three stories.
All right, we've identified originally two rear yard setback variances, but we now believe there's only one. And can you speak to that one?
Yes, that is correct. That is for our proposed lot twenty one oh one that has a hundred foot of depth. From Randolph Street and then there's the notch or the jog in it, and that's what is creating the setback. But the balance of the lot twenty one oh one has more than sufficient setback requirement for the rear yard.
And that's because of the angle of the rear yard line, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how about lot width?
I'm sorry, each one is proposed to be fifty foot where sixty five is required in the zone. This is what was alluded to in your opening remarks. When you said that this is the type of variance that the board has customarily granted. And one look has to look no further than what I found in my walk of the neighborhood of Randolph. Now, each case is separately considered, as we know, on its own merits. But we've seen that in the past, not only in this area, but fifty foot fifty foot wide lots. In an R fifty zone has not caused, in my opinion, any negative impacts on the neighborhoods in Cotteret or the zone plan. And that's important when you are meeting such things as. Dealing with the stormwater drainage and providing sufficient off-street parking, both of which we are. Offering as part of our application and a board approval.
All right, next, let me ask you about the minimum floor area for dwelling unit.
Yes, sir. Well, what is required is twenty five hundred square feet. And let's keep in mind your opening statements and part of my testimony. That the existing house is less than eighteen hundred square feet. And what we're proposing are twenty one thirty five square feet and twenty three oh three square feet. Both are large improvements over what's there now in order to not require any setback relief. We made the buildings just a little bit smaller than the twenty five hundred square feet. The applicant definitely is not looking to do an overbuild and each structure will not take over the lot.
All right. Other than the rear yard setback variance, which we indicate is a hard situation because of the notch. And the rear yard being angled, what's the basis to grant the remaining bulk variances?
We I believe that that would be under the flexible C two analysis. That is where we identified that the benefits to the borough. Would outweigh after identifying any detriments from granting the variance. And then engage in a weighing process. We have, in my opinion, the benefits with regard to the following from the borough with the application. Modernizing the housing stock on the lot, encouraging modernization of the older stock in the neighborhood. And to extrapolate to that, continue what has been done over these last ten fifteen years. Providing conforming number of parking spaces where thirty percent of the homes do not have a conforming number. But a majority, if not all of the two family, three families on the lot size we're proposing does meet it. And to provide a density that is consistent with twenty five percent of the homes on the street.
All right, do you see any detriments by granting any of these bulk variances?
I do not, not in the form that we are proposing in and on the plan and with the modifications we've agreed to the plan with regard to drainage.
All right, now, keeping in mind the benefits you testified to in your opinion that there are no detriments. And engaging in this weighing process, can you form an opinion as a planner that the benefits here substantially? Or do not substantially outweigh any detriment?
The benefits clearly outweigh what I believe are no detriment. And I don't believe we touched upon my favorite forty colon fifty five D two as to. What are advanced from the municipal land use law for the purposes?
Please do.
Oh, thank you. First letter A, because. Hold on a second. Well, with the goals and objectives are furthered by purpose because, in my opinion, letter A, in my opinion, is an appropriate population density. The density, which is certainly within the borough's comfort level based on. Other approvals granted in the past and consistent with the twenty five percent of the homes on the street. Will also promote purpose G because we'll have sufficient space and appropriate location for this two family use. And also the purpose letter I because we'll be creating a desirable visual environment with these new structures. And finally, finally, letter N would because the project will lead to a more efficient move to land.
Mr. Valtuta, I just want to double back to the flexible C two analysis for one minute. Can you testify that, in your opinion, the benefits, in this case, substantially outweigh any detriments?
Yes, sir, in my opinion, they do. We've identified all of the benefits. And we do not believe there will be any detriments, like I said, based on the improvements that we're doing. Both curb and the sidewalk, the parking and the big one also with regard to stormwater management.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for any questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Angela. At this time, I'd open up to the board. Does the board have any questions of the expert witness? I'll ask one more time. Does the board have any questions of the expert witness? Hearing none, I'll close the board. I'll open for the public. Does the public have any questions of the expert witness?
Hi, anyone who has any questions, if you are dialed in on the phone, please press star six. Anyone who is on web access simply unmute yourself.
Good evening, I have a few questions.
Okay, could you, Counselor, could you please? Get the name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Will you state your name and address? And I don't know if you have comments as well. If so, we're gonna have to play you in.
Yes, my name is Ernest Yvonne. I live at two sixty five Randolph Street on the corner of Randolph and Steiner. I'm also have questions that I'm raising for a. Homeowner who cannot attend this meeting because he's at work tonight. And he's located at seven Steiner Street. Whose property backs right up to it.
Mr. Yvonne, is it possible for you to show your camera?
I'll try. There you go. So. A few questions that I have, and I I've lived in this neighborhood almost all my life. And it is a nice quiet neighborhood. And recently, they demolished a house right behind me, which is scheduled to have. Two houses put on the property. And I think Mr. Butter is. Person who's builder over there. But I do have a problem with an ordinance that the mayor had passed years ago or initiated. And I think you touched on it, where not allowing the construction of a two family house on a. Two two family houses on one lot. And even though you want to subdivide the lot and make it two small lots. There is already a two family house on the corner. Of Randolph and Steiner that was constructed about six or seven years ago. And this would be right next to it. The overflow parking from that two family house already comes onto Steiner Street. I can't see where four families who probably have. Obviously, at least one car, may have two cars. There is no room for four cars on the street on Randall Street in front of those two houses. So that overflow parking will also go onto Steiner Street. And there is a big drainage problem right now on that two family house that was constructed years ago. And they tried to remediate it. And that causes flooding in my neighbor's house at seven Steiner. Which goes actually all the way out to Herman Avenue. There was some kind of a pipe that was supposed to alleviate the problem. It didn't work. And you discussed other flooding issues that may continue now with this new construction that would have to be remediated. There's also a large tree in that backyard that is dead. The branches have been falling in people's yards for a while, and people have made complaints and nothing has been done about that. So I guess the question is, I guess that tree would be removed, which would settle some of the. Falling branches and the other neighbors in the area complaining. I don't know if I am the only person at this meeting right now from this block. But I know there's a lot of other houses that are in the area that. I've talked to people and one of the questions they even brought up is that this builder.
I'll object to that, Mr. Chairman. This is total hearsay, not admissible.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Jim.
All right, I'm sorry. I retract that. So I'm speaking for myself only right now, but I can't see the benefit of constructing two two family houses. Without disruption to the rest of the neighborhood on those lots. The house that's there right now, I'm familiar with. It's a beautiful brick ranch house. It does add to the neighborhood. It aesthetics wise. I don't see it being run down. I think that house with a little. Touch of tender loving care on the front property would be a great sale to somebody with a nice family. It has a nice big backyard. You're gonna be putting two 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 family houses over there that the yards. Even big enough to house a picnic table. And they will be close to the other structures. So in my opinion, I can't see the benefit or the beautification to the property or to the neighborhood. And going back to this, what you said about remediating the sidewalks and the curbs and the roadway. Many years ago, there was a project going on in this town where Randolph. This area was mapped out to have the road and curbs redone. And they were never done. So I don't know if your remediation is in the front of those two houses. Or if they plan on doing Randolph Street from Washington Avenue down to Duffy. Steiner from Mary Street to Herman Avenue. But right now, these roads have been arrayed with potholes being fixed regularly. The curbs, like you stated, are the old fashioned slate curbs that doesn't conform to regulation. Never been upgraded or replaced. And I know there was a lot of work on the other side of Randolph Street from all the way up. To Pershing Avenue that was remediated in the streets and the curves. So again. In my opinion. Voice in my opinion, in that voice of everybody. See this benefit to the neighborhood right now. Anybody have anything?
Yes. I live on Randolph Street.
Chairman, are we moving on to the next person? I don't know if there are questions there. More in the nature of testimony.
Are you ready for me?
Chairman?
Okay. My name is Veronica Bernard.
I don't hear any.
All right, so currently, we have one dialed in person who just unmuted themselves and wants to ask a question. Okay, Sir Jardine, I'll let you.
Yeah, and I let's. Chairman, if it's okay, if it's clear that there's going to be some testimony in these questions, so if we can swear in. These members of the public. Because they're giving testimony in addition to their question.
That's fine.
Ma'am, could you unmute the camera? Or she's called in?
Okay, so I muted everyone that was on the call before because there was obviously some feedback. So I'm going to ask the lady who was just speaking before to press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Ma'am, will you raise your.
Okay, my name is Veronica Bernard. I live at three hundred Randolph Street.
Ma'am, you swear the testimonial gifted this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
We, when I moved here, this road, the corner of Randolph and Duffy, kept getting flooded. It took them like. What, twelve years to find out that there was some concrete under the ground? When it rains, the road still gets flooded. This, they haven't done anything to this road. They haven't improved our sewer system. Nothing. And you're going to put up four residential places on that avenue on on that lot. It's impossible. You can't, two cars can't even pass on this road. When you're driving down, you have to pull off to let another car come up. Do you know what the parking would be like? And he talks about increased property tax. He is talking crap. He is going to ruin the neighborhood. Cause there are two sets of duplexes right now. There are no three family houses as far as I see. There is one two family house. So I don't know what he's talking about, three family houses on this avenue. It's mostly all single family houses. And now he wants to put up two two family? Who is he kidding? He don't care about the neighborhood. He just cares about making money. This road cannot afford. Four family units. It just can't. There is no parking area. If we have guests, where would they park? Down on Mary or Shopright Parking Lot and walk all the way down? It wouldn't do anything for the neighborhood. It wouldn't improve the neighborhood. Right now, it is a nice neighborhood with a lot of single families. Why would we want to? Put in four? Houses? I don't care. I mean, I don't mind him putting up duplexes, but putting in four? Is unbelievable. I agree with the gentleman. It would destroy the neighborhood. It should be overpopulating the area. And I'm sure he would agree with me that with that. It wouldn't do a damn thing for the road. Except ruin it. So if you don't care about the people who live on Randolph Street, well, then you can approve it. But if you care about us as taxpayers, you will deny him. You will just put up two houses, not four families. He's going to ruin the neighborhood. As it is already, Cotteret is overpopulated with all the apartment buildings. He is going to ruin the avenue. And I'm sure Mr. Sanchez lives wherever he lives. He doesn't care about Cotteret. And that is my opinion. I have been here. I've been down to City Hall when this road was being flooded every time it rained. You could take a sailboat and go sailing outside. We had to fight to get the road fixed. And now he wants to ruin it by putting in two two family houses? Give out of his frigging mind.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the public like to be heard on this matter?
Looks like there's a Veronica Bernard, but I think that's the lady who just spoke. She had a rant raised on, on the WebEx. Ma'am, you could just simply unmute yourself. Ms. Veronica Bernard, you had your hand up. Can you please unmute yourself on face, on WebEx? It doesn't look like it, gentlemen.
One more time, is there anyone in the public that would like to be heard on this? Hearing no one. Counselor, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna spend a few moments responding to the comments from the residents and do a short summation. The first resident indicated they had a problem with the ordinance. Well, that's not really the point. The point is whether or not we have supplied the proofs to justify the granting of the variances. That's the issue. Both of the residents had the same issues with regard to drainage and parking. Taking the drainage first, I have always put my trust in Mr. DuPont and also Mr. Valtudo, who's done, I can't remember how many applications in the borough, and the projects that he's been involved with have all turned out without any negative drainage impacts on property owners, and we've trusted Mr. DuPont for more than 25, 30 years. I can't keep track of how long it first was. I think it was 1988. And I ask that you put your trust in him again. We will work, Mr. Valtudo will work with Mr. DuPont. There are more than one alternative in order to solve the drainage problem. We're not responsible to handle other people's or correct other people's drainage problems, but we feel that we will get into a net zero situation where we will not have any water coming off of our property, and we may, in fact, improve the situation where there's a confluence of some of those lots with ours. With regard to the parking, the comment was made that the two-family on the corner, there's an overflow parking issue. Well, that underscores the fact that the application before you has a conforming number of parking spaces. If you want to talk about guests, we have on-street parking right in front of our property. This is not a popularity contest, but I'd like to kind of observe that you have only two residents out of more than 40 that are within 200 feet of the subject property. And once again, not a popularity contest, but my client was born and raised in Carteret. I'm gonna rely on Mr. Valtudo's testimony. I think he hit on every single proof item that he was supposed to, and that's because he and I worked together to take the planning and legal issues and put them into one package and put them to you in a very succinct manner. Asked that you approve this application as it's been submitted, we will, as a condition, give you a round for a plan, and we will comply with all the comments in Mr. DuPont's memorandum and your usual conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Is your client available for testimony?
He is. I can put him on.
I think it would be prudent if you, I think it would be prudent if you asked him to testify about his company and how it was started and how many properties and some, where some of those properties are in Carteret. I think it would be beneficial to the people to know that it's been a long time and, and many projects in this town.
Sure. Let's wear him in.
Counselor?
Yes, sir. We swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Santos, can you give the board your track record in constructing residential units in the borough of Carteret?
I've been building in Carteret for the past 15 years, maybe 16, 17 years we've been building in Carteret. One family, two-family houses. I'm born and raised in Carteret, and that's what we do.
Can you give the board examples of addresses, if you can recall them, of what you've constructed?
We've just built one, One Pine Street, Atlantic Street. We built a two-family. Just built one on Hagaman, one family. So, total different. And Woolbridge, we also built. So, we kind of built a little bit all over Middlesex.
And with respect to these properties, after they were constructed, had there been any drainage issues there?
None at all. This house, this ranch is very old. The foundation is crumbling, how old it is, so it has to come down. And the tree along the back of the line is basically all the way on the corner. It's a huge oak tree. It's not that. I will be taking it down. I promised the neighbors I would take that down for them. So, that is coming down. And just making the neighborhood beautiful.
And are you committed to work with Mr. Valtudo and Mr. DuPont with respect to any drainage issues that arise from your construction?
Absolutely. The past couple of floods that we had, there was no water along the back. I spoke with the neighbors. At one time, when they built the duplex on the corner, they did put a big drainage system in that is holding the flow. If I need to add to that, I will. That's not a problem.
Mr. Chairman, he's available. If you or any of the board members of DuPont have any further questions.
Yeah, before I open to the board, I have a couple. Mr. Santos, you, you were born and raised in Carteret. Do you still live in Carteret?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Yes, sir.
Do you plan on moving out of Carteret?
Excuse me?
Do you know, do you know if you're going to offer these homes for sale, or are you gonna keep them as part of an investment?
No, it's gonna be for sale.
For sale. So, most likely, a, an extended family or a, a family with the need of a second income?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, I don't have any other questions. Mr. DuPont, do you have any issues with anything that Mr. Santos has built in the past as far as drainage and parking?
No, he's, he's a very good builder, very familiar with this. He cooperates constantly. And Mr. Val too, too, he knows his drainage, and I am very confident that we'll work through these issues. It, we have to make sure we focus on it, and we will address it, and I'm sure it'll be a terrific product.
So, he testified he lives in town. Do you, do you know where to find them?
Yes, I know where to find them.
Just a little joke. Anyway, at this time, I'd like to open up to my board. Does my board have any questions of this expert witness?
Just, just fact witness.
Hearing no one from the board, does anyone that's in the public want to speak to the expert witness?
Anyone dialing in the phone, please, six star. If you're on WebEx and would like to unmute yourself, please do so. Doesn't look like you have any question.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jardine, assuming, assuming Mr. Clarkin has no more to say, I'd like to turn this over to our Counselor Florrie. And I think we have, I think we have seven or eight for a vote.
Nothing further from me.
Yes, Chairman, as, as board members heard, this is an application with respect to 285 Randolph Street. The applicant is proposing to demolish existing single-family dwelling, subdivide the property into two lots, and construct a new two-family dwelling on each of the, the lots. The applicant has come forth with a variety of bulk variances as well as some D variances here. The applicant requires a use variance because he's constructing a two-family dwelling in the R50 zone, and the 100-year floodplain construction also requires a use variance. As the, as I said, to obtain a D variance, an applicant has to demonstrate the satisfaction, both the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria, yeah. I'm getting some feedback. The applicant- I'm gonna need to mute. All right. The applicant has to show in order to satisfy the, the D variance tests, both the positive and negative criteria. For the positive criteria, this demonstrates special reasons. It's a heightened standard of proof. The applicant has set forth that there's, well, various testimony with respect to how he meets the D variance in, and that this use is particularly suited to this neighborhood. And then the applicant has several bulk variants, relief that he's seeking, minimum lot area complies, but minimum lot with minimum rear yard setback, minimum floor area, and maximum building height do not comply. There's also density variances, which the planner testified are subsumed essentially in the use variance that's being sought. And so, the applicant has testified that he will comply with all the requirements set forth in Mr. DuPont's July 15, 2024 memorandum. And in addition to that, there was an agreement that, well, it's a condition, voluntary conditional approval, that the applicant will work with Mr. DuPont's office to construct what is permissible on this, on this lot, in particular with respect to the storm water management requirements that are now in effect. So, based upon the testimony, we would need a motion to a second, and a second either to approve or deny, subject to all the conditions set forth by Mr. DuPont in his memorandum and all the usual conditions that we require of our applicants with respect to payment of taxes and all other necessary governmental approvals.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, I asked the board if we have a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Black, Vice Chair, motion to approve?
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Who was that?
Second.
I didn't catch who second that. Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. Lauren, can you please poll the board?
James?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Benko?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yeah.
Chen?
Yes.
Peticca?
Yes.
Loman?
Yes.
It's been approved.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Good luck, Mr. Santos, and thank you, Mr. Clarkin, for your expertise. Okay, I'm looking here at our agenda, and we don't have any other business to come about. So, at this time, oh, well, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August 20th, assuming we have applications. And at this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Vice Chair?
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for a long evening, and I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, Frank.